All right, it is 6:07. I'll call the meeting to order. Perry Beecham.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
Tamela.
Here.
Tina. Ted Walliter is not here at this point. She did say she would attend.
I would make a motion. I'm sure she's gonna come rolling in any minute, but I'd make a motion to excuse her absence.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item two, approval of the agenda.
I would like to make a modification to that under other business. Put, so let's on here. I'd like to revisit the general manager, revisit the general manager's contract.
All right. We have that added under item five.
Does that need to have?
To review and discuss that.
So I need to have?
We have a motion to adjust to amend the agenda, so then we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion.
Okay, I'll support.
And support.
Okay, I got confused. Never mind.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is public comment for items not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will move then to item four, general manager replacement discussion. Greg gave us his notice that I believe March 25th is his last day.
March 25th.
He has promoted Steve to assistant general manager. When we were in this position eight years ago, I did contact the MPPA, Jim Weeks, and asked him if he could help us find an interim general manager or help us with the search. I believe we advertised in the Public Power, a couple of publications. We did not use a headhunter at that time, I don't believe. Did we Perry?
No.
But.
As I can recall, I don't, I don't think we did. I think we put it out on the-
Advertising different publications.
Publications.
Does MPPA or APPA have any, like, I looked through my stuff when I went to the conference and I didn't find anything to see if there was any sort of guidelines. Do you know if APPA has anything to help?
I guess I, I guess, you know, I've jotted down a few things. I would think that we would contact the APPA, which is the American Public Power Association, that's the national. And then I would also contact the MPPA, which is the local Michigan Public Power Association, and that's with Weeks. The other organization that, again, I was gonna bring it, but I didn't, The Currents, which is the publication from the MMEA, which is the Michigan Municipal Electric Association, and there's ads in there. So, I mean, I think that we need to determine how we wanna go about trying to get that out there, to get, to get a listing of qualified candidates that we can then, you know, go through and narrow down and interview, you know, interview the, what we feel are the qualified candidates, and then go from there. I, I personally think it's not necessary to go and hire a headhunter company or whatever. I have felt that these three organizations would be able to supply with, would be able to get the word out, and would be able to supply us with potential candidates. I mean, we use Weeks as to, as, as an interim, because we were kinda like in the flux, how do we, you know, go from here to there. So, he helped us more with, with getting the interim, and then, again, through the open process of interviews and, and listing this. Again, you know, listed on Lowell's website, on our website.
Well, I think right now, because of Steve's position here, I don't know that we necessarily need an interim. I mean, we would-
Correct.
Obviously, it's gonna take us longer than the end of March to find a replacement. I think to do our due diligence, it's gonna take a little longer than that. But, I agree with you. I don't think we need to look at a headhunter, and I think if Steve's cool with it, that as assistant, what is his new title?
Assistant GM.
GM, that he can manage things in the interim.
Greg has been grooming him for this position.
Yeah, I know Greg's been doing a lot.
You know, and I think Steve is, is a brilliant young man, but, and, and he's certainly welcome to throw his, you know, resume in the ring with us, but I, I think we have to look outside.
I think, yeah, I think we owe it to the community. That's part of our job. I think we owe it to the community to do a full search and to do a proper search. But, in terms of how do we proceed in the process?
Short term.
If Steve is willing, I don't see any reason why he is, I wouldn't even name him interim. I, as assistant GM can manage, I think it's cleaner. Personally, I think interim, once you get that title, it can create other issues, especially if he doesn't, you know.
Right.
And, and I mean, I don't even know if he wants the job, you know? I mean, so, yeah, it would be up to him to throw his hat in the ring, and I think it'd be great to see him apply for it. But, I think we owe it to the community to, to see all the potential candidates. One of the things I was thinking about today, and I should've thought about it last week and asked you to bring it tonight. I was looking through my folder, and I know I'm the newest member on this council, so I have the least history and understanding of all of this, but I would really like us to quick, take a look at the job description that we have for that position, make sure that it's in good form, if there's anything that needs to be updated based on, you know, because obviously LLP has changed and grown a lot over the last few years. So, I think it's important that we start there, making sure that the job description is in good order. I don't know what process we need to go through to do that, so I would suggest we start there. And then, I would be happy to contact APPA and ask if they have some guidelines or processes, forms, whatever they might have to help us in this process, because they have a ton, ton of resources available.
They do. Another source that might help us would also be the Michigan Municipal League, because some communities, the general manager light power is also the city manager. That's where Tom Richards went is up to, up north, so, we might, that's a force source for us.
Yep, I was gonna suggest that actually, because they've got a lot of good resources for just city general manager searches, but they're gonna apply to this as well.
Yeah. We're, we're in a lot better shape than we were last time. I mean-
Yeah, you two have been through this before. I mean, were you on the council when?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've kinda been through this.
I was part of the council, I'm a fair mark, so.
So, you guys, I have, I am through this process, so you guys have a little more history than I do.
Yeah. Or, that's where I was kinda wondering if it might help to have someone that we, hire someone, I don't know if you call them a headhunter or what, but we had hired somebody for the general, or the city manager search. I think it was somebody that came through MML, and I don't know if we hired MML directly, or if they just would refer us to another group, but it was, so I forget exactly how that worked, but I think they had a whole bunch of, a bunch, meaning like, I don't know, half dozen or so, like advisor types or experienced managers who would help kinda walk you through the process, and then he would also help weed out all the resumes. So, and he would kinda look at some, and, which is kinda helpful, because he would point at some, and he said, "Yeah, this person, he applies to everything, so when you turn him down, he's gonna try to sue you for military discrimination or something." And it's like, "Okay, thanks for letting us know that one," because you wouldn't recognize it on the face value of it. And, you know, things like that. But, he also kinda would say, "Here's some questions you might wanna ask, some things you don't wanna ask," you know, so that I thought it would help having some kind of advisor just to come and help navigate through it, even though we, I think we both have, or I think we all have a pretty good idea of what we're looking for, and idea what the role is. I think just kinda the particulars. It'd be nice to have some guidance, and I don't know if that's something that someone like Jim Weeks, or if some, one of those organizations has someone they can lend to that effect, or maybe it's just something-
Yeah, no, they're pretty helpful. I mean, we pay dues to them, and, you know, every month they get money from us.
Well, and APPA, the same.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's their purpose is to be our, our guidance when we need it.
This, the city actually hired him to do our search, so.
Yeah, exactly. I thought we had hired him, and I don't know if we hired him-
Yep, we did.
If he was, I don't know if he was hired as an employee of MML, or if he was like an independent person that MML referenced.
Yeah, I think he's an independent.
Okay.
I think that's how it works. But, he's through MML, you know.
Yeah.
Recommended by him, and-
But, I think there's like, yeah, I think there's like core people they would recommend, I guess, as independent consultants, but here's, here's six people that are members of MML that we would recommend you use as advisors. You know, I thought that helped quite a bit, though. Plus, they know where to advertise, and beyond just publications or the, those communities themselves, they might have, again, I don't know the extent of what APPA or MMEA or MPPA are gonna provide for us. I'm just kinda speaking from my own background.
Because we had, I mean, we had candidates, don't quote me, but from out of state, several from out of state, that, we were look, that, we were looking at that, I wanna, I wanna say Oklahoma, I mean, it was like Oklahoma, or Nebraska, or someplace that we, you know, we had, from their resumes and everything, had narrowed it down to, so, we had not only received resumes from potential general managers from the state of Michigan, but we, we were receiving from outside. I mean, and I, again, it just, because we had invited this person to come in for an interview, and then that, we, we never got the opportunity, because that person then backed out of, you know, of the, I don't know if it was the cost of coming from Oklahoma, or wherever he was coming from, and, and that. So, that, I mean, I, I feel that, I think we should use a combination of everything. Michigan Municipal League, the APPA, the MPPA, the MMEA, use Jim Weeks. But, I also believe that we have a general manager that I feel is in good standing, that we should utilize him also in this. It's, the, the last general manager was given the option, you know, resigning or resigning, and, and so it wasn't under the best of terms. It was something that happened right, you know, immediately, within, you know, two weeks, or whatever, I don't recall exactly. But, the, this is where, I mean, we have somebody that would be available, would be available till March 25th to-
Assist.
To help, to assist, to help look, you know, figure out the job description. And again, I'm, I think, and that's why I say, I think we utilize not just one, but we utilize a whole realm of, of organizations, of people to figure out the direction, and figure out who is the best candidate.
Good point about Greg, because you may well know many of the applicants, or some of them.
But, I mean, again, if they're, if they're coming from the Michigan Municipal Electric-
Or even APPA, I mean, he's connected all throughout the country.
Right. So, that's, I'm just saying, if there's a few applicants he might actually happen to know, it would be great to have his input on-
And I think he probably could give us-
He's the chairman of the, of the MPPA, and he's also the board member of the MMEA.
Right, but even just through APPA, he's no, or just through his general field of work, I mean, just, he's been doing this so long, he probably knows a lot of folks.
Well, maybe that's what I, I mean, I think we need to sort of lay out a process and say, "Here's what we're gonna do."
Right.
And maybe, I, I agree with you. Greg is a tremendous resource. I mean, he's done a phenomenal job for us for eight years. He's well-respected, not just in Michigan, but throughout the country, for the way that he's managed Lowell Light and Power. You know, so, yeah, I think we absolutely need to use him. And that may be an option, too, to ask him, once he does officially retire, he's not moving out of town right away, if he would be willing to help us through this process, you know?
Yeah, there's some limitations when you retire about what you can do. He's an asset that we didn't have last time this happened. The last time this happened, I mean, the board members had some ideas what was coming down the road, but, you know, we're without a general manager, and we contacted Jim Weeks, and at the time Greg Pierce was not working. And so, fortunately, he was available to come in as an interim manager within-
Oh, I didn't realize he was an interim.
He was.
I never knew that.
Oh, you didn't realize that?
Yeah, he came here, I think he was here within two weeks of Tom Richards leaving. I don't know if you remember Jeff, or, he was here pretty quickly.
I mean, he was, we were, we were fortunate to have, to hire an interim that, that had experience, that was currently unemployed, and, so, came in and, and helped us through this, and, again, at the same time, put his hat in the ring, along with, I think it was, guy's name was Cook, that I think is now-
Bill Cook.
Is now head of Zeeland, I believe it is. And, he was, I mean, we had some great candidates at the time, but we just felt that, he was, again, one of our finalists.
So, sorry Perry.
Well, I'm looking at, well, trying to look at-
A calendar.
Calendar. So-
You can fit thirty squares in that little screen?
Hey, yeah. So, today's the 25th.
Yeah.
We have, our next board meeting, I believe, is the 11th. So, that's two and a half weeks before then. You know, I think what we wanna do is contact, again, might, would be to contact all these, talk to Greg, talk to Jim Weeks, and try to combine something so that we have, so that we have something that we could act on, not, act on in the process at the, at our next meeting, the 11th, so that we go, okay, we've, here's what, here's what we intend to do, is we tend to do a national search, do a local search, do whatever, whatever these groups and Jim Weeks and, and Greg Pierce help, you know, guide us, and then we, we would, you know, again, maybe that's too soon, but, again, I'm thinking that maybe we-
I think we gotta get moving.
At least we can act on, okay, this is, and again, I know, I know Tina's job sometimes at the last minute. I mean, I wish she was here, but she's not, so, that would give us a chance to bring it back to the board on the 11th, and then act on, here's the, here's the, the process, here's the timeframe, you know, and we can have, you know, we want, I mean, our goal, I would think, would be to have, to have candidates, you know, resumes, you know, pick a date that, you know.
Right, with these publications you have, you know, sometimes the lead time to get into those, and I think, last time, didn't we do a thirty day period that we, we accepted resumes for thirty days, and then at that point, closed it and looked at the ones we had?
And what else? The other thing that I'm seeing, like, in The Currents and everything, and some of the ads that they're, that they're running, they're really not, they haven't, several of them that I recently saw, they haven't put deadlines on things. It's basically is-
Until the position's filled.
Until the position is, will accept resumes, accept applications until the position is filled, so.
I like that. Good idea.
I mean, that's, again, that's what I've just have seen in the, in the, I mean, just right now, there's, I think there's, there's, in the most current, there's a position in Sturgis, and then there's another one in another community or whatever. Most, all of them that I'm seeing now, is they're not really putting, is just accepting applications until position is filled.
Which is not uncommon these days. So, if we, and Greg probably could tell us pretty efficiently what resources are available through all of those agencies in terms of assistance with the search. I would assume he probably knows that. But, if we could also then, on the 11th, plan on having, like, if we, is there a time in between now and then to take a look at the job description?
I think Greg would help us with that.
Think about whether or not anything needs to be revised. Have, I mean, I would have Greg review it and say, "How does this fit with what your day-to-day is? I mean, is this close to what you're actually doing?"
I think they updated that. Didn't they update the, the job descriptions of all the staff, like, as part of the strategic plan?
Not since I've been on the board. Not that I recall.
I thought they went over those with us, like, in December or-
Yeah, I think we did.
Or October, something like that. Because we were, because I thought we had that as-
I don't remember seeing Greg's.
He talked about doing it. I-
Yeah.
We hope it goes all the way to the top, but if not, there's nobody more qualified to write the job description than him. So, we just turn it over to him, get it done.
Because if we can have a job description and a list of contacts, and then think about where we wanna post it, and once that gets posted, then we can, at a later date, probably sit down and formulate a list of questions. And, how's the interview gonna work? Are we gonna do it with the full board? I mean, what's our process for?
Last time, it was only a three-member board, so it was a little simpler to accomplish, but.
Oh, wow. I forgot about that, yeah.
But, it, it's a very important position. I think that we all need to be involved in that, you know. Sometimes things come up where a board member can't be here, but this is a huge decision. I think that eight years ago, we were kind of on a downward trend, that we'd lost money five out of six years, and things were not good here. We're in a much better situation. Now, we're profitable, we're, you know, funding our capital projects with revenue rather than borrowing money. But, it's also a more complicated job now. We're in the process of, you know, getting our second generator assembled, we've got the biodigester. It's become more complicated than it was also.
Which is why I think we need to do a national search.
Yeah. Especially if we're gonna pursue things like, you know, looking at the, the gas and the fiber to the home and-
Right.
And other.
All the stuff that Greg's laid the groundwork for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got lucky finding a guy as good as we did, and I hope we get that lucky next time.
Yeah, that was a, really lucked out.
He has done a really good job.
So, we'll get Greg's help in updating the job description, see how quickly we can get some advertising out there.
So, are we gonna, I guess, how long do we, you mentioned, like, kinda advertising it as open until position filled, but is there a point when we decide we're gonna start evaluating candidates?
Well, hopefully we'll get enough.
If we get twenty applicants, do we start evaluating? If we wait a month and we only have three, do we wait longer? I mean, I guess-
Depends on the three, I guess, if-
Yeah, I guess that would make it easier, but-
Well, if we, the posting, the earliest, I mean, maybe that's one thing we can do, and I don't know if Greg would feel comfortable doing it, but if Greg's comfortable not only bringing a revised job description to us on the 11th, or if it needs to be revised, but I would at least like to look at it, because I don't recall seeing it since I've been here.
Okay.
I think he and I might've talked about it when he did a little orientation for me when I started, but I don't remember seeing it. But, looking at the job description, and then also, maybe if he would draft a posting, like, what do we wanna advertise? What's the posting gonna look like?
What I'm, again, looking at the dates and different things, what I would propose, and part of it is because there's a, there's a council meeting next Monday that we're, Lowell Light and Power's doing a presentation at.
Oh, that's right.
So, you know, those are some different things. And, we're not that, so, I would like Greg and Greg Canfield to work on, to get the job description, to work with Jim Weeks, to get the information from APPA, MPPA, MMEA, what's available in the Michigan Municipal League, and, and come back with that information at our next board meeting, so that we can, we, you know, I'm not saying that, I think we need to bring that all back to the table, have a discussion about that, and determine, this is what we're gonna do. And, once we have more information, like Greg Canfield said, you know, when's the publications coming out? What kind of lead time do they have to have to, to place those things in there? That would then allow us to set up a time, a more efficient timetable of, you know, like you said, are we gonna accept applications till the job's filled, or, or are we gonna say we're accepting applications till it is filled, but we're going to start evaluating in twenty-four days, or whatever the case may be? That, to me, would be my goal, is to bring that back on the 11th, so that we can-
Timeline.
Timeline, and get, moving forward on that.
Right.
And then, at the 11th meeting, basically, then commit to, or, okay, here's, here's the, and maybe, again, maybe Greg, maybe Jim Weeks, again, come back and say, you know, "You really need to use this service," or whatever. And then we can come back and then take a look at that and go, "This is the direction that I think we should go." And with the timeframe.
I think that makes sense, that, you know, because I don't know if we wanna start writing job descriptions, or at least the postings yet.
Right.
Because, you know, that's something that, if we were to hire someone, they might have canned postings that work pretty well, rather than having, you know, Greg or somebody draft one up. But, I think that makes sense, to kinda get the information, what are the options for, how do we approach this? And, and then kinda come here and we can figure out how we're gonna go forward. Because I think we worry too much about the detail at this point. You know, if we were to, like, say, choose an advisor, I mean, they're gonna kinda lay it out for you, and you don't really have to worry about the detail. And, that's kinda how I remember the city manager one, too, is that I was kinda surprised that the guy came in, it's like, "Here's what I think we should do." And, I mean, we had some stuff we could discuss back and forth, but, once he laid it all out there, we're like, "Oh, yeah, I guess that all makes sense." And, yeah, and I guess then we'd have to also figure out as how the whole interview and review process would go. One thing I remember from the, the manager search that we had done, is I think that the advisor we hired, I think he actually did the first cut on the resumes. Because I think we got something like-
That would make sense.
Because I think he said, like, twenty-some people applied, I remember, which was a lot at the time, because I think he said previous ones in the beginning, like, twelve or so. But then he narrowed it down to like twelve, that we looked at their resumes, and we kinda said, "Here's the," we had a consensus of four that we really liked, and then those are the ones we brought in for interviews. The one thing I kinda wished, I was like, I kinda felt like, well, why didn't, couldn't we look at all twenty-five? I mean, I wouldn't mind if he said, "Hey, don't ignore these ten, let's look at these ten," you know, or something, but for some reason, that's how they wanted to do the process. So, that's something, I guess, to think about as well, is, do we want to, as a board, sit down and look at every resume, or do we just, you know, how do we go about that?
Yeah.
I guess I don't have the answer, but it's something to think about.
Right. I think last time what we did, we looked at all the resumes, reviewed them, and with some guidance, we're told, you know, "Here's your best ten." One question Perry, just backing up a little bit. You said Greg and I will go through updating the description, figuring about, you know, resumes until what point, but you said, "What's available from MPPA?" Are you talking about an interim manager, or-
No, no.
-hire gun to help us find-
Resources.
Just, I mean-
Resources.
Okay.
Contacting Jim Weeks, and, and obviously Greg announced at the last MPPA that he was retiring, and so, they're aware of that, so they, again, you know.
Has anybody sent their resume in yet? Just the fact that other people know he's retiring.
So, you're kinda saying if Greg and Greg would, between now and the 11th, they would contact those four groups, right? The APPA, MPPA, MMEA, and MML.
Yeah. Jim Weeks is the director of MPPA.
Yeah, so he's one of them, so-
He's one of them.
Yeah, so if they would contact those four groups and find out what they offer resource-wise, what they can do to help, and-
Then we can decide which resources-
Yeah, and just kinda bring that back and go from there, and then just make, you know, making sure we have the, the job description.
See, I'm not, I'm not sure that MMEA, Michigan Municipal Electric Association, the electric, we have so many acronyms, but I'm not sure if that's, because I know, I think Bill Cook is the chairman of the board on that. Greg sits as a trust, is on the board, but there's a group of them- Greg sits as a trust, is on the board, but there's a group of them. I'm not sure that there is a, that there's a paid position in that. I don't know that.
I think that's a little smaller organization.
Well, that's just, that's.
But, I mean, still, just what resources they do have and, you know, I mean, some of these places, they may have an internal jobs board. They probably know, like, some.
And that's why I keep coming back and talking about Jim Weeks, because he is a paid position with the MPPA. So, he's, you know, the, I don't know what his title is, director or whatever, but, but so he, so you can go to the, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't know that the MMEA has a paid position and all that kind of stuff.
Right. But, I mean, still, it's just, finding out what they, what they can do, what they know.
But I, I do. Right, and I do know they, they put out the currents every month, and that has, that's where you, you know, you'll see ads for linemen, you'll see, you'll see ads that have, that pertain to electric utilities.
So, I think that sounds like a very workable plan. If I can shift gears a moment. Have we considered that maybe we should put out a press release and that type of thing? Or do you want to wait until after this February meeting so we can lay out a plan for the community and say, here's kind of what we're doing?
What we're doing?
Well, I mean, I think it's important. I know Greg announced it at a meeting, and obviously it's public record, but I still think it's important for us to do something to, who knows what the ledger would.
Recognize it. Yeah, we'd have to write it because they'd get it.
But I still think there's something.
There's, there's an article coming out this week on his retirement.
Okay, so the ledger did pick that up and is doing something.
One question I have, stepping back a little bit where we're at. My concern is, you know, we're at the 25th today. What if the deadline for getting into the next advertising stuff is the 5th or the 10th? And by us acting on the 11th, that we're not even going to see anything in print before Greg, you know. I think his assistance in helping us select, and, you know, would he possibly come back and help us after he retires? But I'd, I'd like to, I just wonder if Greg and I meet in the next few days and he says, yeah, the deadline, if we could get at least some ads going, I really value his input on his replacement.
They should also have E-List, because I know I get stuff from APPA all the time. And I don't know if the rest of y'all do, but because I went to the conference, I get tons of stuff for APPA. I mean, I know they also have that, but yes, I, there is some lead time on that. It's probably going to be a couple weeks.
And I just, that's what I wonder, if we get looking into this in the next few days, we would contact other board members, but to, you know. I'm just looking for a consensus that if we can get something done quicker, that it might help us to have something to look at before Greg is gone.
I think if we already do have that job description, and it's something, you know, yeah, that's in good shape, and if, like I said, if you guys are looking into that and you said, hey, there's a deadline coming up in X days, that it would be nice of us to get something in there, then I think it's, there'd be the consensus that I guess it'd be between, if you were, I guess, to just email and said, you know.
Yeah, we'll email you and let you know.
Let us know that's what you're planning to do.
I think that.
I think that the consensus here is that to go ahead and take advantage of that and go from there.
Because I would rather move more quickly than be stuck, especially given Russo also, you know, I mean.
Yeah, we got a couple holes to fill here.
Yeah, and I think it's important for us to get moving. I mean, I don't want us to be too long without someone in that general manager position, and these things take time. It takes time to go through the review, and it takes time to interview process, and someone to give notice, and all of that other stuff that has to happen, so. Yeah, I would be perfectly comfortable with you guys if.
We'll touch base by email, but just if that gains us a month by moving a couple days quicker, I think there's some advantage to that.
Oh, definitely, I think, yes.
Okay, so Greg and I will work on updating the job description, making sure that's accurate, determine how our ads going to read as far as how long we're going to look at resumes. I mean, from what I've seen as an employer trying to hire people in today's market with the shortness of available people.
It is hard.
If we find a winner, we hire him. We don't, you know, wait and see, are there two winners and, but.
They are very tough out there right now.
But that will be a decision the board makes, but last time we were, I think, a little bit disappointed in the number of resumes we got. There's just, this is a very specialized field, and there's not a ton of guys out there that do it.
Yeah, well, that's why I do think it's important that we do have a nationwide, you know, posting, though.
Yeah.
Because you never know if somebody wants, some student in Florida decides to come back home, and, you know, who knows, you know?
Right.
Or Oklahoma, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, there's small, you know, municipal power companies like us all over the country, and so there could be some really good candidates in other parts of the country.
That are sick of warm, nice weather, want to come to Michigan for the winter.
Or somebody who's out in Minnesota and figures Michigan winters are mild or, I don't know.
Okay.
Plus, we already have a pretty good national reputation, so.
Yeah, the awards that we've won, the things that.
There may be some people in other states who are saying, hey, this will be a great opportunity, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hope so. That's a good point. Okay, well, I'll start working with Greg on that, and we will keep you guys updated by emails.
I guess one other thing, I don't mean to add this to your list, but I guess as you and Greg work on that, maybe one thing would be to confirm with Steve that if necessary, he'd be okay, you know, running things and, you know.
Yeah.
Well, it kind of comes with the job, you know.
When he took the assistant manager, but I think it's a courtesy.
Yes, a courtesy. I mean.
I agree. Good, good point.
I mean, if Greg were to, you know, fall off the face of the earth tomorrow, you know, Steve would have to do that anyway, but like you said, it's a good courtesy just to.
I think it'd be nice.
We want him on our side.
They might as well at least have that talk.
All right. I don't believe we need a motion on that. We've got a consensus on where we're going as a group. Any input, Mr. Mayor?
Nope. On that, all sounds good.
All right, from the crowd? All right. That brings us to other business, which is reviewing the general manager's contract.
Why I brought that up, with the recent things that have gone on in the city and with the new council, I'm going to lay it right out there, I have no faith in the new council. And I want to look at putting a clause in the general manager's contract that if he would be terminated before April 1st, that he would receive a full year's severance.
Salary and benefits?
Yep.
Just as a security blanket for him?
Yes. And that's, you know, I'm, I feel that the council has said to, has said to me before that, you know, we're not looking to ax everybody and do this. We want to work with people and everything, and I think their actions from the last council meeting speak volumes. So, I'm looking to protect the general manager until his retirement of March 25th.
Okay. Put that in a motion? Is there more discussion?
I guess I'm kind of wondering, I mean, that's two months away, so could, could that even happen in the next two months? And I guess the other.
Yeah, I don't know what the action is. I mean, I didn't think that the city council had that ability, but given what happened last week, heaven only knows what's going to happen.
Right, I did confer with Dick.
I don't have a lot of trust in.
I spoke with Dick Went today about this matter, and we, the general manager serves at the pleasure of the Board of Lowell Light and Power, and Section 16.2A of the City Charter, the board sets the compensation of the general manager. This really falls under that category of compensation.
Well, the board serves at the pleasure of the city council, and given the actions of the city council, heaven only knows what's going to happen to this board.
Exactly.
I mean, there's, there was no cause for the action last week, so they don't need cause to do whatever they feel like doing. That's kind of the way they've been.
This just makes it expensive to terminate the general manager.
Well, but it also protects us, I think, in good faith.
Wouldn't that already begin to be expensive, because at this point, terminating him now, well, I guess, what would, what would Greg lose if he were terminated now versus March 25th? Is there like a certain year that where the benefits or something like that?
I think if a guy's good enough to give us the courtesy of, a lot of guys would come in and give you two weeks' notice I'm done. He gives us the benefit of a two-month notice.
And he's also setting things up.
Well, I guess that's what I mean, though, is if there's some milestone that by March 25th gets him one more year of, of, what's the right word, longevity or something.
It's probably a factor. I don't know, but.
If there's something in there that, I mean, at this point, given that he's announced his retirement, it seems like any termination ahead of that would serve simply to punish, and that he would have no trouble suing us, you know.
And I'm not sure that that wouldn't happen.
I think the termination last week served to punish, so I don't know that that would happen.
So, I will make a motion, I will make a motion to, to add to the general manager's contract to, if the general manager is terminated before April 1st, that he would be entitled to one year's compensation and benefits. And if the city council doesn't pursue any further, it's no skin off our nose. He retires March 25th, and, and we're not out one dime.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in support. If there's no further discussion?
Well, I guess I am, I'm still trying to figure out if that scenario were to occur. I mean, I guess then if, I mean, okay, that'd have to be pretty irrational to even try to, you know, terminate him before that point, I think. But given that ration is not their strong suit, you know, I don't agree with that personally, guys, but, you know, actions have shown that. But, I mean, I'd be concerned that unless now they're going to, if they feel the need to do that anyway, that's just going to out the taxpayers and more money, and they're not concerned about that either, as they've shown. So, that's where, I don't want to kind of get into an escalation thing where it's like, okay, well, you know, you're going to do things we don't like, we're going to make it really expensive, and next thing you know, it's just a whole bunch of, you know, back and forth.
But I believe that's what they have, I believe that's what they have done. And, and, and the problem that I see is that, that it's being vindictive, and that even though that person, anybody in their rational mind would say, well, he's retiring March 25th, we'll just go through this process, hire a new general manager, and, and try to heal and move forward. But I can't, but I, I have no faith in that, none whatsoever, that they're rational, that they would do that.
Right, and that's kind of where I feel like if we were to add, if we were to put this clause in there, what's to stop them from doing it anyway and trying to blame us, or blame Greg or somebody else, you know? And I guess that's where I'm just.
They don't have, they don't have to. They can just wait until he retires the 25th.
Yeah, so, and I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at, is do we really need to do something this drastic just to protect against that chance?
I believe, my opinion is, yes, and that's why I made the motion.
I guess I, I just don't know at this point without, you know, someone who can explain the laws or rules behind this, because.
Well, the rules are pretty clear, that the Board of Lowell Light and Power serves at the pleasure of the council.
So, we've got to be asked to be done tomorrow without any, any public.
And there has been some pretty broad interpretation by the council that they are allowed to do whatever is in the best interest of the city.
Well, I mean, we'd question whether or not the actions have been in the best interest of the city, but that's a whole other conversation.
We're trying not to run legal bills up, but this is a simple way of ensuring that this action doesn't happen, I feel.
But then, so are the boards really at the pleasure, or are they?
They are.
They are.
So, board members can be removed. I know we're appointed for a term, but I thought that there has to be a reason for dismissal or something.
There has to be a hearing and show the wrongdoing.
Well, there should have been a reason for dismissal last week.
Right.
But there was no cause shown, so I, I can't, we can't guarantee that there's actually any cause.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to create animosity either, but I also feel like that card's already been thrown on the table. And given the rumors that are going around this community about the city council's desire to dismantle Lowell Light and Power.
Or just dismantle the city, it sounds like, but.
I mean, it's, it's a little frightening to me, but this, we've worked really hard to get where we're at as an organization, and I think Lowell Light and Power serves this community very, very well. And, you know, I mean, you guys know, a few months ago, I came in and told you about my friend that moved out of the city and was so disappointed and said, I will miss above all else, what I will miss in Lowell is Lowell Light and Power, like having consistent, affordable, good electricity, and so I think that.
I guess I just don't see how.
I don't know that the actions are in the best interest of the.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's kind of clear, you know, but I just don't see how this protects anything, because for one, I don't know, like, the whole legal definition of.
Doesn't protect, they can still do it, but it's just going to cost, it's just going to cost them to do it.
If it's true that the whole board can be replaced on a whim by any single person, or just, you know, any single mayor, I guess, but if that's true, then there's nothing stopping them from just replacing the board and changing the contract and firing them, so.
That's true, too.
Just to clarify.
And that's where I'm not even sure the legality of any of these things, like.
You're right, there is, there is nothing.
Like, I didn't think that board members could just be.
I reviewed this with Dick Went, and this is a legal move. We set his compensation. We are allowed to do this, which is.
But what does that gain us, I guess, because if they can be undone, then.
They can be undone.
I think the goal in doing it is some security, but you're right.
I would hope that the council.
They could replace this entire board tomorrow and put people on this board that would make the decision that they want made. That's very true.
I would hope that the council wouldn't make that move, but I think this is, like Perry says, it shouldn't happen. If it doesn't, there's other than 15 minutes of our life we'll never get back. There's not a cost to this. And it's just a courtesy, I see, to a man that's done a wonderful job for the community. Maybe we need to make a 10-year severance instead of one, but put a high price on it.
We were going to say something.
Yeah.
It isn't the mayor that makes that decision, it's the whole council.
Well, the mayor nominates.
No, no, the mayor appoints them, but only at the whole council's approval.
Yeah, the mayor nominates people, the council approves.
No, the mayor doesn't nominate them.
Oh, really?
No, they apply for it. I don't, I just, and we, no, it's always been done wrong. That's why you're thinking that the mayor appoints them.
Well, yeah, everyone applied, well, you applied for it.
Yeah.
No, they, they, I was asked to be on the board. I didn't apply.
Yeah.
Well, I think most, most people on most of the boards in the city are asked by someone to put their application in.
It's not a glorious thing, and you get bloody sometimes. Who wants to be on a board in this town?
Especially given the last few years.
Yeah, well, and I think in the past that we had done it by consensus, that we would okay the mayor's selection, but I think we, that's when we later realized that actually the board needs to, or the council needs to approve who the mayor wants to put in a certain seat, but I think it's the mayor who makes that appointment. So, as a council member, I can't come up and say, I want so-and-so to be on this board, council vote on it. I can't do that. The mayor has to say, should we put this person in that seat?
They look at the applications and reveal.
That's the way, that's the way it's set up.
Yeah, but you could, if you, if you wanted, if you're on the council, you can, you can come and say, can we put this person in?
Yeah, you ask that person to write a letter of interest, is generally what I do.
That's what you do.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and support on the floor. We've had some discussion. Is there more discussion we need to have?
I think we're good. I mean, I don't know what more I can say, or.
I mean, I, I agree with you. I also agree with Perry. It's, I feel like, yeah, you're right. Tomorrow, we could all get noticed that we've been asked to, we've been removed from the board, and it could be replaced next week with a totally different group of people that will do exactly what the city council wants them to do. And they would have any way around it. I think what Perry's trying to do is hopefully provide some deterrent to making a rash decision of a man who's in less, well, two months, two months from today, is today the 25th?
It is.
Two months from today is going to retire anyway and leave honorably, because he's served our community honorably. So, I think Perry's just trying to create a deterrent for any more rash decisions being made. But the reality is, yes, they could turn around and undo everything anyway.
And the situation is actually the same as the city manager, where the general manager of Lowell Light and Power did as the board directed him to do.
Yeah.
He didn't run this show. We ran this show.
Right.
And there were some decisions made with the old generators that in hindsight, I'd make differently today. But unfortunately, with the information we had at the time, we made the best call we could.
You make the best decision you can.
And that's what it is. And that's what it is, but-
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and support to, if the general manager is terminated before April 1st, to extend a one-year severance package in wages and benefits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, or aye, or whatever you say.
Okay, motion passes three to one.
And I agree with-
After a good discussion.
And I agree with the intent, what you guys are trying to do, I just-
Right, you're right, they could, they could put you guys in and wipe it out, I think there's a timetable that would be difficult to do, but there's, there may be some agendas here that we're not aware of. Any other business to be discussed?
I'd move to adjourn.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
And I don't know, maybe Greg, you haven't had any conversations with Greg Pierce, but do we know when he's planning to move forward on replacing the other position, Russo's?
He is, I believe, looking, Tom just announced his retirement last week, so I believe that they've started to-
Okay.
-post that position.
Okay, because, I mean, ideally, it would be nice if that position were at least close to being filled before he retires, I think that would take some burden off Steve and-
There's a lot, there's a lot of knowledge walking out the door here, Tom Russo.
There is a whole lot of knowledge, a whole lot of history, and, yeah, I, no matter, yeah, my, my concern is, we will feel that for a period of time, I mean, all we can do is find the best people and-
So I guess that's-
We got good guys here.
We do have good guys, but we're gonna feel that.
Yeah.
You know, you lose that history, I mean, anytime you lose someone in top management, you're gonna feel that loss.
Yeah, we're a small company, and-
Yeah, our community is gonna feel that loss.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, Tom's replacement, that's entirely the decision of the general manager.
Yes, yes.
And so I guess, so really, I guess the issue is, is there, will Greg be able to find somebody good enough before he leaves? Because if not, then it's gonna be up to either Steve or the, the permanent person-
Or whoever gets in the position.
To do that.
My thought was, it would make the transition easier for everybody involved-